Now called to order, meeting the study session in the Mesa City Council for Thursday, February 14th, 2013. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. I would wish a happy Valentine's to my Valentine. I doubt whether she's watching this right now. Sorry, what? Stay ahead, day. Happy birthday to Arizona, 101 today. First item is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on the Art Place concept, Mesa Arts Center.
Good morning.
Ms. Ornstein.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and City Manager Brady. So glad to be here this morning. Happy Valentine's Day. I am so excited to share with you this 21st Century Cafe Society at the MAC concept, which is an Art Place concept. And that has to do with a granting program called Art Place. So I wanted to start out by saying what Art Place is. This is a national organization. It's a collaboration of a great number of leading national and regional foundations and banks, working in very close partnership with quite a number of federal agencies, including the National Endowment for the Arts, HUD, Health and Human Services, et cetera. And they've come together because they believe strongly in the power of what they're calling creative place-making. The notion that arts and culture create a great opportunity at the heart of a portfolio of strategies having to do with transforming communities and increasing their vibrancy. And we are very happy that the Mesa Arts Center and the City of Mesa are a finalist in this year's Art Place process. It was a long process coming to the concept that I'm sharing today, and it has multiple parts. It says we worked for six months. We actually started work a year and a half before the deadline because we applied last year and were not a finalist. But we refined the idea and really worked hard with a lot, really literally dozens of stakeholders in the community, artists, the DMA, Nedco, West Mesa CDC, the City Planning Department, and many, many, many others. We submitted our letter of inquiry in November, and we were selected as one of 104 finalists out of over 1,200 letters of inquiry that were submitted. So we've cut the odds, but there's still, it should be quite competitive in the next round. And the full proposal is due February 25th. The goals of this project, which is a multifaceted project, are really the goals we've been talking about in many other conversations over the course of the last couple of years. This notion of expanding the Mesa Arts Center and the heart of the community as a social gathering place that engages people of all kinds, diverse populations, creates a place that students want to come. It also has some very practical applications. It creates a new, more open, flexible space, very much needed for the campus. It includes an element that allows for visual arts demonstrations on our campus, which currently aren't served very well. It should increase the ongoing activity at the MAC, but it will also be very beneficial to downtown as a whole. And maybe among the things that it will do, maybe among the most important, is the idea of creating this welcoming, vibrant environment when the first light rail riders arrive in Mesa, in downtown Mesa. There are three components to this project. The Alliance Pavilion, and I'll go over each one, which is a new stage already fully funded, and Mesa Arts Alliance has provided most of those funds. Plaza improvements that we're recommending to the north end of the Shadow Walk, and we think these are really important, but they are in early conceptual development, and we're going to welcome your feedback. Then there's this digital community bulletin boards and cafe environment part, which is the portion that adds the people, really, into the equation in a big way, and that is funding being requested from Art Place. So we'll start with the Alliance Pavilion. This is a project that grew out of a desire to do several things. One is to have this location where we could celebrate the visual arts that are an important part of our campus with visual arts demonstrations, but to have a versatile stage that could also host performers. We have a lot of press events at the Art Center. This would be a place we could do it, and we have families coming for photos. It's generally a new opportunity at the Shadow Walk. You may remember, and I'll show you a picture, of the concrete slab at the head of the Arroyo where the jets of water come out. It's a heavily underutilized space. We've covered it and used it for a couple of performances at festivals, but it's really sort of unused and not terribly attractive. We wanted a feature that looked like it was built at the time the MAC opened, not like it was an add-on, but looked like it had always been there. And we're very fortunate that the Mesa Arts Alliance stepped up with funding, and we engaged DWL, which was the original contractor for the Mesa Arts Center. So the concrete slab that I'm talking about is the lower right of the screen, and you may recall it, it's raised and it has a grate on the top of it, right near the north end of the theater building. And at the top of the screen is the north, and you're going to see a north-to-south view of what the new stage envisioned is looking like, and I'll show you a picture later of it in the site. It's viewed as a gentle stage, not terribly high. We want it to be very accessible. It uses the sails, the same type of sails that are in the design of the original Mesa Arts Center architecture. The back of the stage has the glass panels that you see on the Shadow Walk. This is a placeholder on color. It might be orange, it might be yellow. And it is a versatile space. This is the side view from the Shadow Walk. This shows a close-up with some lights embedded in the stage that uplight the sails so that it'll look beautiful at night. And you'll see at the back is a storage counter. When you're doing visual arts work, there's a lot of stuff. And so the next slide shows that that slide's open and back and is a storage space with a gentle slope at the front, so that when it's not in use, this is a great seating area. Families can gather, it can be used. And at the back, if you were traveling north on the Shadow Walk, you would see this, which is a waterfall feature coming off the back of the stage intersecting the jets of the Arroyo. It's viewed as being several things. One is it has a sort of water table invisible edge gathering trough at the top that has the feel of the water tables that are on the campus now. The water flows down and creates an interesting pattern with the jets coming through it. The back splash with the probably scored concrete there is viewed as being a site for a potential future public art project, if and when we get to the point where we want to do that. There could be an art project on that face. We're not planning that now. And this is the view of that stage on the Shadow Walk, basically as it would exist once it was built. So that's the first part of this concept. The second part has to do with the plaza. And this is what we call the North Patio, which is at the north end of the theater building, right opposite the light rail. And currently, that, and I'll show you a picture in a second, but just to cover a couple of the basics, that space is currently a broken-up space. There's about half of it that's usable, and the other half, I'm pretty sure you've all come across the, there's a large gravel drainage basin with some scraggly trees along the edge that bisects the space and really limits.
By the way, I've got to compliment you on your use of language in this thing. We're fixing a concrete slab and scraggly trees. That presents quite a.
Visual.
Yeah, quite a stark visual.
Visual image, yes, yes. That's the intention. The opportunity.
Cindy, if that's the intention, you don't say it, okay? Just let it. We sort of got that. That's why I mentioned it.
Yes, thank you. Of course, all anyone has to do is go look at them, and the same words I think come to mind. This is an opportunity to expand many uses, not only things like festivals and a cafe area, but things like wedding receptions. We have no place for a large tent, so there's some earned revenue potential. Benedictine has expressed their desire to have an increased plaza space that they could use as well. And what you'll see is that this is really going to be the front door. It is already a front door, but it will be more so once the light rail arrives, and I'll show you why. The east end of the Center Street Station will push the crosswalk east and will change the arrival experience for those coming off that end of the platform. So let's look at the current situation. This is the current North Patio. Everything to the left that is that beige color is the gravel, and the trees that I was describing go down the middle and bisect the space. So you have a divided space instead of an open gathering space. When the light rail comes in, this shows the light rail station superimposed over that photo, looking now north, and the current crosswalk is pretty visible there in the middle, the white. And you can see that the crosswalk pushes to the right. And what that means is that now, when you cross the crosswalk with where it is now, you cross, and you have to jog a little bit to the right to get around the gravel to come into the building or to continue on into the center. With the new crosswalk, you will come over and you will be facing the door to Benedictine, which is great, but when you look to your right to try to access the Art Center, what you're facing is no pathway to get there. So we really would like to fix that. So the desired plaza area would be very different. It would be open and inviting. It would expand the usable surface, no obstructions. It would signal people how to walk, how to get to the Art Center and the Shadow Walk and the events happening there. And it would also accommodate, as I said, a lot of new uses, and that's important to us. What we have now for this space is really, I would say, a conceptual design or one step above a conceptual design, because it's in the early stages. But we did need to get a sense of what was possible. We still need to accommodate the drainage needs that the gravel drainage area takes care of. There are some grading issues to address. So Dave Wilson from Environmental Planning Group provided some conceptual designs, and the initial thinking, which I'm going to show you, is to take the simplest of them, which would be most affordable, and provide the most open space. And this is that plan, that conceptual plan, and I show it really just to share a couple of points. What you're looking at, the different geometric patterns on it, are the ground plane. They're not things that stick up for the most part, except for the trees. What they do is they carry over the pattern from the existing ground plane pattern on the Shadow Walk, and then they create a radial pattern, starting at the crosswalk and going into the campus, that will carry you visually in. We also have a group of very nice palm trees right along Main there, and so they have proposed extending that into this radial pattern as a sort of welcoming entrance to the space and to the area. And there's just a couple of cafe tables shown there to give a sense of scale. There's room for quite a lot of cafe tables in the space. So those are the infrastructure kinds of changes that are envisioned for this project. And I've mentioned various ways that people get inserted into them, but the 21st Century Cafe Society is really the place where we talk about how the people use this and how it belongs to them. So I'd like to share about that. We envision the Mesa's 21st Century Cafe Society as an activated, interactive environment. We are talking about a space, and I'll talk more about that, that would involve the community in the design. It would involve the community in devising questions or topics that they would like addressed and would be interested in exploring. It would feature interactive displays and also interfaces onsite for people to create, and digital sharing of work by artists, community groups, and others. And it would be in a really comfortable and enjoyable and social setting with cafe tables and food, et cetera. The idea is a place for all people, to engage, to have fun, to share ideas, create, socialize, really a place to celebrate community. And where does the idea of Cafe Society come from? There are two different sort of meanings to that word, and I think they come together beautifully in what we want to do. There's the notion of Cafe Society in the early part of the 20th century. It was the beautiful people or the bright young things. They actually called them that, the people who gathered in the fashionable cafes and restaurants in New York, Paris, and London. So it's a place to be. It's a gathering place. It's social and fashionable. But it was also the name of a New York City nightclub that opened in 1938. It was the first racially-integrated nightclub in the United States where both artists and the audience could be of multiple races. And it was the first place that the song "Strange Fruit" by Billie Holiday was performed, a landmark song that was about lynching. And that's not to be sober, but to say that this is about a place for ideas. It's a place to bring people of all walks together and celebrate that engagement. And it's also a place to have fun and be social and celebrate community. So it's all of that. We want to build on so much of what this council and prior councils have been successful at doing with town halls, iMesa, Pancake Breakfasts, the community festivals that we've had, to build that sense of community. And we want the community to own this. So we propose that the questions, ideas, and topics that will be explored here are actually chosen by the citizens. We propose using iMesa as a method for voting, submitting and voting on ideas that people want to explore in this space. And to do it, we want to create a multimedia, interactive platform where people can share onsite, and they can also create work in their own groups, and it can be shown here. It's inspired by a couple of things that I want to show because I think they give a sense of, at least, the engagement we're seeking. One is the European urban plazas, which are so effective at creating, in essence, outdoor living rooms for the community. There's also a project called, the title of it is "Before I Die" by a New Orleans artist, Candy Chang. But what that's really about, it's "Before I Die, I Want To." So it's the bucket list. It's what are my dreams and aspirations? What do I want to accomplish in my life? And what is really cool about this? It was done on abandoned buildings originally in New Orleans, and all kinds of people used it. And then, this is in Brooklyn, and it's been in Paris, and it's now been done all over the world. And it's been effective because you can see all kinds of people want to either share their ideas about their aspirations and hopes and dreams, or they want to read other people's. And this is a somewhat more passive interaction than the one we propose, because we now are proposing to use 21st century tools to do it. And what's really cool is you can see, you can wash it off and start all over, and that's what we can do with digital bulletin boards every day, all the time. So we propose using the design that is already at the Art Center, which is these light boxes by the MCA. And what we'd like to do is take those light boxes that currently change color and make a similar form that will, in fact, though, each panel would be a digital bulletin board, it would be multimedia screens, and it would have interactivity built into several of them, so that people can design things that use sensors for interaction by the community. The boxes would be multi-dimensional in terms of how they were used. There'd be several colored light panels that would pick up and complement colors on the light rail platform, on the existing light boxes at the bus stop. Other panels would have interactive digital bulletin boards with multimedia screens with sensors to enable this presentation of interactive art by people like the young people at Heatsync, the people at the new colleges, folks at ASU Poly. And then there'd be this online community voting for changing the theme or topic every month or two months. It would be about all kinds of ideas and things that the community was interested in. But I think a lot of it would end up being about this idea of what are our hopes and dreams for the community, for ourselves. Some of the screens would feature responses that are created live right there. Two or three of the tables would actually have interfaces where you could sit down and responding to the theme, you could write poetry, you could make art, and you could put it on these screens. They'd be monitored by staff. They'd use blocking software to make sure that nothing unacceptable appeared on them or stayed on them. And they would be disengaged at the nightly closing, so whatever was there at that time would just stay, and it would start over the next morning, so that it was controlled. The other screens would share all kinds of images, words, videos, and they could come from anywhere. People would send them in. They'd be solicited, they'd be curated, so we would select them. But it would be students, Girl Scout troops, things emerging from artist residencies that we're doing, K through 12 schools, and especially the colleges. We really see this as a tremendous opportunity for the college students to have a place that they really feel belongs to them. The environment would have cafe tables, chairs, umbrellas that can move around, so they're flexible. And what we would try to do after this was in place, and it would probably have to grow gradually depending on budget and what money we can raise for this, what we would hope to do is have live performances. Eventually, we'd like them fairly soon, every week, every Friday, Saturday night, so that there are opportunities for the live performance and engagement visual art demonstrations. We've already had at least one of the college and the Mesa Public Schools get very excited about the idea of a place for their students to showcase their work. And the idea is that it will continually change. It would be compelling for visitors to come early, stay late, spend money in downtown Mesa, linger, use our restaurants, go to our stores. So it's a place to have fun. It's a place to exchange ideas and creativity, to facilitate a constantly evolving community dialogue, and to tie to all aspects of community life which are currently bubbling up and shaping up to create this engaged community. Everything from the Mesa Urban Garden to the changes for the Idea Museum at Amy, to this idea of a possible larger central urban plaza or an art space project. We have a lot of collaborators. I'm not going to read the list, but we have worked with a very large number of people having discussions or meetings, getting input, and also people who want to be actively involved in the creation of this. So I want to point out that there is a very strong possibility that the development of the actual technology for the boxes would be an iProject with ASU Polytechnic. They've expressed a strong interest in doing that, and it would also cut the costs of doing the project, because we'd be working with faculty and students. But we would engage professionals in each of the areas as well as part of this, to make sure we got the quality at the end that we needed. Including, I might add, that onboard for that is Michael Tingley, who was the original design architect from Bora Architects for the Mesa Arts Center, and he is part of the core creative team for this project. He has agreed to do that. The Mesa Arts Alliance Pavilion is already funded and planned. The North Plaza renovation is not funded. We would have to determine funds for that, and this is very much a ballpark estimate of $200,000 to $300,000. We do not know, because there are a lot of factors in the costing, most especially, you know, the drainage and what that will cost, and some of the infrastructure. Cafe tables and chairs, obviously. And then the funding we're requesting from Art Place is for the digital bulletin boards and the onsite surfaces, interfaces at the cafe tables, and the estimate for that is So just to, I'm not going to read it, but to say that we feel this project responds to all four of the primary goals in the Arts and Culture Department strategic plan, and we're very happy to have something that's that comprehensive as a big project. And it also responds to two key arts and culture objectives, one around engagement of the community and one around activating of spaces in downtown. And finally, we feel really that it responds to all five city council strategic initiatives. In the parentheses are the ways we see it as connecting to those, but we really feel that one way or another, there's an impact on each of the initiatives in this project. And I would welcome any questions. I know it's a lot.
Questions. Councilor Kavanaugh.
Just to comment, this project really has evolved over time, and there's a lot of moving parts, but they seem to move really well together. And so I'm hopeful that we will be competitive for the art space plan, because this really is kind of the completion, almost, or the culmination of the plans and designs that the community's had for the Art Center. The Shadow Walk has proved a great place for festivals and performances and things like that, but I think what you're talking about here really creates a seven-day-a-week presence, day and night, in connecting people in a very creative way, in terms of combining technology and the arts. So I compliment all the work by all your collaborators on this so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like the utilization of the space that is not being utilized, and actually, that does create barriers. That gravel area has been a frustration for everyone, was sort of like hanging out there, I think, when they finished the original, the Art Center originally, so it's great to see something going, and especially getting rid of the scraggly trees. We're replacing them with some date palms. Councilor Richens.
I just have a couple of design questions I'll get with you afterwards.
Sure.
I don't, there's just a, they're way too technical for this.
Okay, happy to. And some of those will be worked out, if we get the grant, some of them will be worked out in the process, but I'm happy to address anything like that.
Just, I mean, this doesn't really mean a whole heck of a lot, but the grate on top of the concrete slab, what's underneath it? Does that serve anything other than just to be decorative and be there?
It doesn't. I think, and actually, Councilmember Kavanaugh probably has more insight into this than I do, but my impression from some comments that various people have made is that there was an idea, an intention originally, of putting a public sculpture there that didn't happen. And so it was really a placeholder for something, I believe.
The grate was. Well, Councilor Kavanaugh had kind of.
But there are no mechanics or anything underneath that we have to preserve or worry about.
And by way of background, that was designed to be a water feature, and it was, the artist who had proposed it was supposed to be like a cloud-type of thing that would have rain and lightning and all these other things. Those of us who served on the design committee had a nickname for it, called it "The Flying Potato." And there were a lot of issues, practicality issues, in terms of how it would actually function and particularly maintain, but in theory, the water from the cloud would be going down through the gate, the grate, and recirculating and things like that. But fortunately for all of us, the potato got tossed out of the kitchen in the design process. But it really is a major element area of the center, and I think we've seen the practicality of that area for the temporary stages that you put. So I think what you're proposing is certainly much better than having the lightning and rain come from the potato.
It sounds like they were going to have to put somebody there to explain every time what was happening. Not a good thing to do. Vice Mayor.
Recently, we had a gathering at our home, a big wedding, and we had these, what I call the millennial generation, young, highly educated professionals, and a bunch of them gathered.
Beautiful people.
I don't know how you, you know, it's interesting how they.
Bright young ones. What was that?
Bright young things.
Bright young things. See, I thought they were talking about Chris Glover when you were saying that.
It was interesting. I was thinking back to that experience as you're describing this opportunity and what you're looking at, and I remember them gathering in our front room, and there was a bunch of them. They came from Washington DC, Boston, other places, and they were wondering what they could do on that Saturday night, and they're kind of looking at me, and I'm kind of drawing a blank for that particular generation. So I'm actually really excited. You know, going to El Charo and then going to something else wasn't really high on their list.
The drive-in?
Yeah. And they ended up going someplace else, I'll just say that.
Oh, they went to Pete's.
Yeah, Pete's. So, you know, it's interesting to understand, and, you know, our goal is to get these, you know, to look for opportunities to people to come to the community and all the culture and everything that's involved. So I'm pretty excited about, you know, what's happening, and it's just interesting to take that experience and see what you're proposing and what the possibilities are. And, you know, I don't think anybody will ever accuse me of being kind of the artsy guy, but I get it. So I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Should we worry that you get it? See, but then again, he understood the floating, the flying potato, too, so. Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So next step is we'll wait for you to, Cindy, we'll wait for you to report back when, as these things progress then, right?
Absolutely. We will know, we will hear in May.
Okay. Look forward to it. Next item is to hear a presentation, discuss, provide direction on the proposed bike share Next item is to your presentation, discuss by direction on the proposed Bike Share program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the viewing audience at home, my name is Natalie Lewis, and I work in the City Manager's Office. And with me this morning is Jim Hash. Jim is in our Transportation Department, and he's also our expert bicycle coordinator. And then also to his left is Neil Curly, and Neil Curly also works in the City Manager's Office, and we have been working on this proposal together, and we want to share kind of the direction that we're heading in at this point, and make sure that we're heading in the right direction, and it's a comfortable direction for the City Council. So what is Bike Share and what's its purpose? Generally, what we're talking about is expanding connections. We want to expand connections not only to existing infrastructure and public facilities, but we want to expand those connections for different types of, of uses, experiences, and target audiences. So for downtown visitors, for example, we want them to be able to get in and around downtown very quickly. If they want to go to the 21st Century Society Cafe and then go back over to, you know, the Urban Picnic downtown, it's a very quick, easy way for them to get there and to get in and around downtown. For students, they may want to get to, from the MAC all the way over to the school at the Mesa Center for Higher Education. They also are, as Vice Mayor pointed out, a younger generation that like healthy alternatives and sustainable types of tools, and so we think this kind of goes in alignment with that. Major employers are always looking for options for getting their employees to and from, to work. And for us, and for the focus of our first phase, which is really part of our model that we're sharing with you today, is we, we want to partner with our nonprofit agencies and social agencies, which there's abundance of them in the downtown area, but really to help their clients access these kinds of infrastructure, because our goal in the end is to help them get access to that, which helps them get regional access and access to jobs and services and other things that they need to be successful. So we also, just like the 21st Century, looked at this council strategic initiatives, and we feel that there's really good strategic alignment with all of them, but not in the least of leveraging our existing infrastructure, both the, the Light Rail, but also the MetroLink and other types of, of public facilities that are here. And again, partnering with our nonprofit agencies, which this is a really important segment and tie for us for this project.
Along with the City Council's strategic measures, we also are in direct alignment with the strategic measures that are lined out in the Bicycle Master Plan that you recently adopted, as well as the Transportation Plan, the General Plan, and several of our subplans like the Central Main Area Plan. As I discussed with you last week with the Bike Plan Presentation, this is part of achieving the bicycle-friendly status platinum recognition. It make, this program, such as Bike Share, makes it available, more bicycle-ready available opportunities to our citizens in the community.
Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about kind of Bike Share and what it is. And basically Bike Share is a network of bikes that allow people to easily get from one location to another. And kind of new technology has made these systems a lot more flexible, user-friendly, and have significantly increased kind of the accountability that you didn't see in systems in the past. And all of these systems are solar-powered, so they require no direct link to any sort of utilities. This allows us to kind of put locations in a variety of areas, and we can easily adapt and shift to meet future needs. They're also self-contained and connect back to a central system via wireless internet connection. What this allows people to do is easily check out bikes, either with a credit card or some sort of transit pass, and then we also know who that person is and what bike they're checking out. And there's also a GPS tracker in each of these bikes, further, further in kind of that accountability measure, so we not only do we know who has the bike and what bike they have, but we can also know their location. And kind of these two, tools also help the city kind of judge the performance of the system as a whole, so we're able to easily identify kind of what locations are being most commonly used, the most commonly traveled routes, things of that nature, to adjust and adapt to future uses and future needs of the riders. And there's also kind of a fun social media aspect of it that allows people to individually track their own personal statistics, so they can share on Facebook things like total miles traveled, amount of calories burned, and kind of carbon offsets by taking the bike instead of a car. So this is kind of a great tool to, as Natalie said earlier, increase that access that people have to things like retail, education, and transit. So then I'll go and toss it back to Natalie, talk a little bit about how this will work in Mesa.
Okay. So right now, you're looking at a map of the, kind of the, the steady area that we've looked at for this, and right down the center, you'll see there's Main Street. And when you look at these series of maps, you're going to see these kind of concentric circles. The green one is really just showing you that you're one mile from Light Rail, the red is two miles from the Light Rail line, and the yellow out here is three miles from the Light Rail line. What we know in, in studies about getting access to these kinds of, of infrastructure is that people will generally walk between a quarter of a mile to maybe a half a mile to access things. And so the whole idea of Bike Share is to extend that a lot further, which you could actually get them out, all the way out to like three miles to this infrastructure. So it really, you know, expands that area of accessibility. So right now, what you're looking at is the, either existing locations of where we've got Light Rail and the future locations, and what we would do with the Bike Share is try to have either hubs or kiosks, which are stations where you store the bikes, at either one or most of these locations. Our very first phase is going to focus on also partnering with some of our nonprofits, and what we did is we decided to turn to a couple of our most robust partners. We, we've talked to A New Leaf, and we've talked to Save the Family, and both organizations are very excited about this project and the opportunities that it could have for their clients. And so as we move forward with that, we'll keep them as key partners and then expand from there further. And then, of course, you can't forget all the other existing public facilities that are down there. You have the Mesa Senior Center that people could use these bikes to get access to, our public libraries, our city courts, of course, all of our arts and cultural facilities. And then again, we've got both existing colleges, but also upcoming colleges. And so MCC is actually within that two-mile corridor, and so there's opportunity for students, even from the MCC campus, to get to and from our bus line and also the future Light Rail line a little bit more efficiently and effectively. And then, you know, eventually, as this continues to grow and we add more bicycles, you know, you can even envision expanding this further where people can get access even all the way out to the new Cub Stadium. So the very first phase is what we're calling a pilot program, and we're working right now. We went to the Sustainability and Transportation Committee a couple of months ago, and we've presented this, and one of the key things that the committee told us is that we really need to work regionally, and we, so, so that is, has been our focus as we've moved forward. So we're continuing to work with Phoenix and Tempe to try to find those efficiencies and work together on that as we move forward, while also just focusing on our main objective and goals and making sure what we kind of come up with in the end has a good fit for Mesa. And then what we're going to do on April 6th is there's this great event called the Arizona Great, Great Arizona Bicycle Festival, and it's at the Mesa Convention Center. And what we have done is invited all of the Bike Share providers, if you will, to bring their bikes and demonstrate it to the public. And while we're there, we're going to, we're going to have a survey, we're going to get their comments and their feedback, and we're going to really try to figure out, you know, what is the best kind of use of bike and, and system, and get better feedback that way. Also during this time period, we will continue working with other user groups, stakeholders, and community members, and our partners to get more feedback and make sure that whatever we do in the end is, is responsive and collaborative. Our first goal is to just start off with about 60 to 72 bikes, which doesn't sound like a lot, but placed in very strategic locations can make a difference, and then to evaluate, 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 so that we can, as Neil talked about, we'll know where the bikes are being ridden, we'll know, you know, who's using them, we'll know if there's areas or hubs or kiosks that really aren't as well-used. This is such a flexible type of a system that we can just move it if we need to. So we will have this ongoing way to evaluate and make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck for the infrastructure and for this tool that we're using. Phase two would be to kind of consider expanding the bikes or the number of bikes a little bit more, maybe to 100 to 120, but then to leverage that opening of Light Rail when it does go to Mesa Drive in 2015. And, and really just, the more bikes you have out there, the more access that people have to them. And then Phase three is really just conceptual, and the idea is that as this continues to build on its success, and that we continue to kind of hone it based on previous phases, that we are extending this along Main Street as Light Rail continues to extend to Gilbert Road, but maybe even further, because even past Gilbert Road, we're, we're going to have bus link and all those kinds of things, and there's lots of things out in the area, including, you know, Gateway Airport, you know, ASU Poly and the Power Road Knowledge Corridor. So that in itself is kind of the direction that we're headed, first and foremost with that first phase of 60 to 72 bikes, probably by the end of this calendar year, focusing and partnering with our nonprofits, like we talked about, and, and keeping that regional discussion going. And with that, we're here for any questions, and again, we just need to know from Council today, are we heading in the right direction? Are comfortable with this approach?
Questions? Comments? I would assume that means that they agree that you're, you're heading in the right direction.
That's a standing ovation without doing something.
Either that or they're all asleep. One of them. No, I, I've been in other cities where they have this, and it's really, really cool to see these, see how people utilize Bike Share programs. It's, you know, most of those are more commercial in nature. I like this idea that it's a mixture of both free, not free use, but, how do I want to say it?
Subsidies.
Well, not, I'm not getting the financial part of it, you know, like.
Accountable use.
Well, when I was in London, for example, it was mainly tourists going from here to there. It was, it was more of a commercial, that type of thing, and this is, accomplishes a, a much wider variety of uses, from essential use by those people who use facilities, to convenience use for people on Light Rail and other things, to, you know, just casual use. That's what I was looking for, casual use.
Casual use.
And I, so that's why I like this program better, because it's not just set up for casual use. It has a real purpose, real meaning, and is a good, great complement to, to what's coming through with, with Light Rail. And I could see it playing a, a real big role in bringing everything together, especially here in the downtown area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You could play a really nice logo, too. I like that. I do. Cool logo. Not scraggly. We don't like scraggly. No. Slabs are scraggly. We're not, we don't like that today. Okay, next item is appointment of Boards and Commissions. Do I have a, have motion from Councilman Kavanaugh, second from Councilmember Summers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Acknowledged receipt to minutes of Boards and Committees. Motion from Councilmember Summers, second from Councilmember Glover. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Reports on meetings and conferences attended. Do we have any?
Yes, they were. How would you?
Okay. Then Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to the Council, next Thursday, our work session will be held at the Holcomb Stadium in our city suite area. That will be holding the strategic planning process. So it'll begin at 7:30 on that second floor, up there where we usually meet for the games, so we invite you to be there. We'll have a few guests and a speaker, have a guest speaker, and we have, we'll have an agenda out to you this week to kind of demonstrate some of the discussion we want to receive from Council, get some direction for the next few years. Also, we'll be doing the forecast, will be part of that presentation also on Thursday. And also just want to remind everyone that Saturday, February 23rd, is the next City of Mesa Shredathon, and it'll be from 8:00 to noon at the Center Street facility. And Sunday, Feb, this is amazing, it seems very early, but Sunday, February 24th, will be the first Cub Spring Training Game against the San Francisco Giants at 1:00 at Holcomb Stadium. So, and we will see the Mayor and Council. Our next Council meeting will be held on Monday, February 25th. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mickelson, any requests to speak?
No requests, Mayor.
Motion to adjourn from Councilmember Kavanaugh, second from Councilmember Summers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.